The Berkshire Road Regional School District School Committee will be conducted both in person and remote. In-person attendance will be limited to school committee members, superintendent, and all district school administrators at the district offices. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted at this time. However, the meeting may be accessed remotely through Zoom. Agenda items of those reasonably anticipated by the chair, not all items listed, may in fact be discussed. Those items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being recorded by CTSP and the school committee reporter and other members of the public, and will be broadcast once transcribed and approved, minutes will be made public and posted to our website. So the first thing is our minutes of January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Before I do that, let's just, for my own sake, let's take a roll call vote as school committee member, so I'm sure we have a forum and I know who's here. So Diane Singer says she's on the call, she can't hear anything. Can everyone else hear? Bill, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Okay. I don't see Diane. I wonder if she's on the wrong. Yeah, let me promote her. You see her?
I just heard her.
Yeah, I thought I just heard her voice. I just moved Bonnie to. I don't see Diane as an attendee. So I'm wondering, I thought I just heard. That's why I don't see any phones. Can you just send her the link?
Yeah.
Well, you can go forward to the roll call and she can.
Yeah, well, I just want to let her know that I've been going through. Okay. Get back to where we were. Anne Hutchinson.
Hi.
Jason St. Peter.
Hi.
Sean is not here. Bonnie Bon Befoni.
Hi.
Molly is not here tonight. Bill Fields.
Yep.
We're working on Diane Singer. Corey Spray.
Here.
Rich Dehoney.
Here.
And here, so we're missing a few people and we're trying to establish Diane. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two? I'm out.
I'd like to make a correction.
Second. Okay, I have a second from Jason. A motion by Rich. Go ahead, Bill.
Um, in the donations, the request to approve donations, it should read, this is from Sarah, her daughter, and Bill Peggy's husband. Because Bill is, was married to Peggy or Margaret.
Okay, so we will make that change.
Motion to amend as stated by Bill.
How about withdrawing, so we don't have to take two votes? Withdrawing your motion, just make it as amended.
I withdraw my motion and motion to approve as amended as suggested by Bill.
Withdraw my second and second, you won.
Perfect, so we have a motion, a second. Anyone else? If it wasn't roll call, it wouldn't care. Uh, roll call vote. Anne.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
Bonnie.
Hi.
Bill.
Yes.
Corey.
Hi.
Rich.
Hi.
And I, to handle this. Okay, superintendent's report, and I'll be able to look up the names. Okay. Yeah, I got a message from Ben that he's having trouble with the Zoom link too. Um, let, let me share a couple things. So, so some good news. We continue to chug along. I'll get to some stuff a little bit later in the COVID report about some shifts there. Um, there, there are two things that aren't particularly good news, but I think it's worth sharing with the committee, and our response to them was good news. So Saturday over the weekend, it, it looks like a valve in a ceiling pipe in the, um, at Muddy Brook failed. And the valve failed shut instead of failing open as it should have failed. Uh, so the water in a cooling coil didn't circulate. Uh, so, and that space between the ceiling and the roof has a tendency to get very cold. Um, so it broke and we had some issues with water. Uh, Steve, Sol, Frank, and Gino responded quite quickly, cleaned it up, pulled the ceiling tiles out, uh, got all the water up, and they were able to get, um, Gilmore Plumbing in, uh, in a few days to, to work on repairing that. So that's great, and that happened on Saturday, it was quite cold. Um, today, in another room on the third floor, this time the heating coil failed. Uh, and, uh, and they stopped it almost immediately. Um, uh, and tomorrow Gilmore Plumbing's coming to, to work on that. Um, we have a little swing space in the room, so we moved a small group of kids to a science room, and Bonnie Grober's class to the next door room with the small group of kids where they were. Uh, so, so that's frustrating what's going on there. I, I think that building, that was about sixteen years old, and showing its age some, and, and when really cold air comes into that building, that air then goes to several different places to be, um, uh, warmed up before it comes out of the HVAC, uh, system, and the combination of really cold air coming across pipes with water in it that's not moving is trouble. Uh, so, uh, Steve and, and his folks will work on it tomorrow with, uh, with Gilmore Plumbing, and, and we hope to come up with a long-term solution. Uh, he's also made a commitment to deliberately, uh, replacing some of the valves over time, so that if they were to fail, um, they would be with the kinds that stay open as opposed to closing. Okay, so, not really good news, like sort of troubling news, but, but quick, quick response. The other thing I want to mention is Saturday, uh, we got a very quick heads up because Lily Silk was there doing some work on her own, and, uh, and, uh, she reached out to me, I reached out to Steve, and Steve and Frank and Gino were there within minutes, so that's good news. Okay, that was a mouthful. Katie, do you have some real good news from, from Muddy Brook?
Yeah. So we are all but one, uh, paraprofessional away from finally being fully staffed. So we're still working on that one. But this week we had some new people join us. Um, Lydia Johnson is our new English as a Second Language instructor. She's hit the ground running. She's already, uh, connected with three newcomer families, um, to, to the district, so she's really, um, hit the ground running. Um, we formally hired a volunteer to replace Katie in our spring. Him, Ossalino, is a paraprofessional that's gonna, is, has joined our Mahalo program, so we're now fully staffed in a Mahalo program, he's good. And Sam Taylor is a paraprofessional in grade four. So again, we're almost fully staffed. For a second there, we were fully staffed, but then something happened. Um, we have, uh, community connections had to pivot a little bit because we didn't want to mix the big old group of kids in the gym right away, but they did, um, social interactions, but it was interesting how they decided to do it. They did it with paper-based and card games to have some real social interaction happening between kids that wasn't, um, computer-based, so that worked out really well. Um, they also, uh, were introduced to the American Heart Association fundraiser, uh, and it gives, um, our students a number game for a thousand, uh, up to a thousand degrees so far, so that's, um, good news. Um, we are looking, it's looking like we'll have, um, our ILG groups, which are our learning groups, set up finally. Um, we'll have, uh, the two top runners for topics are the emotional regulation strategies and community partnerships for family support. So teacher groups will be working on at least those two and two more.
Great, thanks. Um, Ben, do you have a couple things you're interested in sharing?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yep.
Great, thank you. Um, yeah, I love to share out some things. Um, middle school is really plugging along. Uh, kind of came roaring back from our, uh, break, which felt really good. Uh, just finished up the first semester, our second quarter. Um, feeling really strong, uh, with what the students are doing and what the teachers are preparing. Been getting around to classrooms this month, uh, seeing a lot of exciting things. Today, uh, is when I have a fifth grade humanities classroom. Students are working on writing. We use a writing process called SRSD, self-regulated strategy development. It was really amazing just to see across two humanities classrooms, every single student engaged in writing. Uh, very, very, it's very structured, but what's amazing about it is high productivity. So students are writing a lot of sentences, they're doing peer reviews, they understand what they're doing, but the most amazing thing is just the self-efficacy, like teaching students how to write and follow a process that they themselves are working on. The writing that I saw, they're working on something around the Revolutionary War. Um, and, uh, really just an interesting set of, of writing. Same thing in a math classroom in the fifth grade. Uh, students are working on fractions and multiplication. Uh, very difficult work. If you remember, it's just been really rough to bring continuity since March of two thousand twenty, and math is one of the most difficult things to teach if you don't have continuity. Really just amazing to see the math teachers as they teach kids how to manipulate fractions and very complex, uh, um, just really complex machinations, but what I find is the most amazing is the TDG, the program that Christie brought to us, the Teachers Development Group, getting kids to turn and put things out and struggle through really, really difficult, uh, problems. So I'm just really proud of the students, uh, their perseverance, but also their creativity. So that's just a little highlight from the middle school, um, for right now.
That's right. Great, and Christie, you're here, so just speak up.
Oh, yeah, sorry, let's go Julian first and then anything gets missed. That makes it a little easier. Uh, so we seem to be in that mid-winter lull, uh, but there's exciting things going on at the high school. Um, last weekend, the advanced drama performed, the Radium Girls, which is a huge success. Um, athletics continues as normal. Um, it was exciting yesterday that the administration was able to allow spectators of students back into the gym. Um, so that was really exciting, and it's going to be a great atmosphere. Um, state tournaments are quickly approaching. Um, we're all hopeful that our teams will be able to represent us. Um, Project Connection is in full swing, um, offering a, a really, a wide variety of opportunities for students, uh, after school. Uh, student government continues to work really hard at bringing some sense of normalcy, and they're doing a very good job, uh, with a bunch of different fundraisers and activities coming up around Valentine's Day, um, and a super exciting scavenger hunt that the whole school is going to be taking place in, in some capacity. Um, wellness is improving. I sort of reported on it last week that it was really at an all-time low with the quarter ending. Uh, but with that behind us and the third quarter starting, um, this week has sort of just been a fresh start, um, with a lot of breathing room. Um, pool testing happened today. Um, I think we can sort of breathe a little bit with that as the numbers seem to be trending down. Um, and then the student advisory to the principal continues super hard to work super hard, um, and there's subcommittees throughout the school working, um, in all different aspects.
Great, super comprehensive.
And efficient, too.
Yeah.
I'll try to be equally efficient, and I'm going to pick up where Julian left off. He left off with, uh, the student advisory board work. Um, and I'm going to just give you a little bit more specifics. The group is divided into four, uh, different subgroups. We have a group that is focused on, uh, social, emotional, and mental health concerns of students. That team has been working with our clinicians to create bulletin boards in the school so that students are all aware of who the clinical staff is, and the clinical staff are going to be, uh, visiting crews to introduce themselves, because a lot of the students don't actually know who they are and how to access them. And, um, there's another, um, part of that group that is working with Carl Zingman. Um, um, the social, emotional, learning component of sports and how we support coaches and actually being aware of the needs of students on their teams in that, in that regard. The second committee is our communication committee, and the students are working really hard on helping us get Parents' Fair up and working. Um, the student advisory board, students themselves are going to be the first ones signed up, and then the students are going to train all the students in their crews to get them signed up on Parents' Fair. An invite did go out to all the high school parents to join, and I'm kind of tracking responses, and we're going to work together collaboratively, um, to help get all parents sign up, and teachers are going to sign up through their ILGs, so we're making some progress on that front. Um, and really with the help of students, so that's wonderful. The third committee, uh, school climate, uh, Julian actually addressed most of the school climate, but we do have students who are trying to finish some of the murals in the building that were never finished, the display cases that have been left untouched for years and years are getting updates, and students are working hard on helping us make the hallways, uh, greater and more, uh, likely to improve the school climate. And finally, um, the last group I met with today is actually around program changes, and we had a lively discussion about student concerns with regards to the crew experience and how we can make it better, and student concerns around just, around some of the program shifts, which we'll actually talk about in a bit, connected to the survey that you all received. So that's that. The second piece of good news I wanted to share is actually something I just heard today, and I don't have student names, but I thought this was really exciting. Hallie Friedman, in the fall, um, gave an assignment to all of our journalism classes, uh, connected to a competition that Berkshire Eagle was sponsoring, where students had to identify a concern of their community and write an article. Uh, students did this, some of them just did it as a class assignment, many of them actually submitted it to the Berkshire Eagle. Eight of our students were selected, um, as winners in the competition. They're all going to receive one hundred dollars, and, um, they're going to be working with, um, uh, journalists from Berkshire Eagle to edit their articles, and articles will be published in the Berkshire Eagle. So I will be, um, putting that out in the newsletter with names to recognize the students, so that's a big deal we're excited about. And then the final thing I just want to highlight, um, is the PD that we did this week, uh, was yesterday. Two things happened. One was just at the high school that I want to talk about. We had, uh, one ILG actually do a fishbowl protocol, uh, focused on SEL, and they sat in the center and all of their colleagues sat around and listened to them debrief the work that they had done in the first semester around social, emotional learning, um, and things that they were trying in their classrooms to better support students. And we continue to work on that as a whole faculty. And the second thing I just want to highlight is District Y, we did from one-thirty to three a full K-12 conversation and content areas around our graduation proficiencies. So we are making some progress in that area as well.
Cool, um, thank you. Thank you very much. Any questions for anybody? Okay, so, uh, a couple, uh, relatively simple things. In, in front of you is a, a proposed calendar, uh, for next year. It doesn't yet have the school committee dates. Like before, I plugged them all in. I wanted to check with you on the calendar. Uh, and if somebody'd like to make a motion to, um, approve the calendar, that'd be great, and I'm open to responding to any questions.
Motion approved.
You have a second.
Second.
And a motion by Rich, a second by Corey. Questions?
So this has one more half-day professional development in last year?
Yes, it does.
In March, it looks like?
Mm-hmm. Anyone else? Roll call vote. Anne.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
Bonnie.
Hi.
Bill.
Yes.
Diane.
Yes.
Um, Rich.
Yes.
And yes. Okay, thank you for your support on that. Oh, Steve Cordy, vote.
I'm sorry, I missed you.
Yes.
Now I owe you an apology.
Uh, good. Uh, thank you still for your support on that.
You have any more support?
I don't know, that's great. Um, so the, the next thing that I, we want to take some time to talk about, um, it is a ninth grade team update and student family survey results. Uh, and for lots of people who are at home in particular, uh, I want to set this up and, and give you, uh, a, a little bit of context on this. So we've been doing, um, a lot of work, and, and the ninth grade teachers and students, and to some degree, families, uh, have been doing a lot of work around, uh, the shift that we articulated last year in the Equity and Access for All paper, um, that, that has sort of been common parlance, been referred to as the, um, ninth grade de-leveling, right? And, and it, and it's both of those. Um, and we made a commitment to, um, collect all sorts of data, uh, including survey data and hard numbers around things, and, and, and we're coming, uh, today to share some of that. It, it's in our packet, which is on our website, if people at home want to look at it. And, and we surveyed, uh, students and parents of, uh, ninth graders. So there are a hundred and thirty-three students. We got seventy responses, which is a fifty-three percent response rate, uh, which isn't super high, but it, but it's, it's typical. Um, and for families, there are a hundred and thirty-three families, and, and we had a thirty-three response rate or forty-four responses, which is also pretty typical. Um, what I asked the school committee members to do was to, uh, review the, the data set, and it's, um, just seven pages, and, and particularly what I asked them to do were, to respond to two prompts. Um, a, and they're both, um, sort of low-inference friendly prompts, right? We're in the halfway through a year doing something that's a very dramatic shift. Teachers and students are working hard on this, and the, and the prompts are, um, um, the, the first one was, uh, what did you notice? And the second one, um, was, uh, what questions might you have? And what I thought I'd do quickly, people are open to this, and I don't totally want to put school committee members on the spot, but, so you could, you could certainly pass, a, as we go around, is to do really two rounds, and the first round would be, um, what did you notice? And then as we get through everybody, then we do a second round of, um, uh, what are your questions about? And, and some of it we can respond to tonight, potentially, Christie and I could. Uh, and, and some of it, we, we may just take really careful notes on and, and dig in a little more and, and come back to you. Um, a, and then the other thing that, that I always offer you and add on this, so you could pass, and maybe your neighbor wants to respond, or i, if this feels really awkward and you don't want to engage it this way, then I'll go back and do like a, a high-level summary about it. But, but I think there's something to be said for, for looking at it, um, more, more organically. So, d, does anybody want to start with something you noticed?
I can start.
Great, um, so I noticed two things. The first thing I noticed is if you're looking on page two,
um, to the surveys of sort of different aspects of schooling to students and families, um, I noticed that in the family survey, that the only question that sort of directly relates to proficiency-based systems has the largest disapproval. Um, so twenty-seven percent saying not very well, and twenty-seven percent saying just okay. Um, and then on the student aspect of it, the one question that sort of could be related most closely to proficiencies as well has the largest sort of portion that's not saying very well and saying just okay. And then on page five, uh, where students were asked to give direct feedback and sort of put their thinking into words. If you notice the warm feedback, students talked about having study hall with their friends, talked about adjusting to the world post-pandemic, they talked about stricter deadlines this year, which I can only imagine is comparing to last year. But then when you turn to the cool feedback, it all sort of becomes hyper-focused on proficiencies. Students are struggling with proficiency-based grading. They're worried about how colleges will be taking their number grades versus their proficiency grades. They're having issues with consistency between classes and the proficiencies and how they're being taught. Um, so I just thought it was interesting that the warm feedback is about the school in general, the, the climate, and then when it's time to give cooler feedback, um, it becomes sort of very, very detailed and passionate.
Good, great.
Building from Julian's comments, I guess one of the things I noticed is that just generally with the structure of the survey and the questions that are answered, if we're trying to dig in to really get at how people are feeling about the proficiency-based learning, um, a lot of these questions seem fairly generic and could have been applicable to any grade. Um, and in some ways, I'd say we should be doing it for all the grades to see how things are going across the grades. But I personally would like to be seeing more specific, uh, student as well as parent feedback, um, on the proficiency model. And I don't know how we get there. I think that that's harder. We're asking them to compare something that they haven't had before, potentially. You know, these are ninth grade students that haven't done and experienced ninth grade in any other way. Um, but I think it's important, if we're going to want to get data out of here that's actually useful, that we can do something with, um, it's going to be important to get that piece right.
Okay, no, man, that's a really good point, and that's something, I, I'm not even going to take the time to respond to it in depth now. That's something that, that, uh, we should do some thinking around and, and come back to you all with some other models. Or one thing I didn't mention at the beginning, I, I see this as sort of the first of three big surveys that we're going to do with students and parents. So likely we do another one in, in March, and then another one towards the, uh, e, end of May, depending on the timing.
And maybe some of it is around something like expectations versus actuality, like what they thought the year was going to look like or feel like, and what it's actually feeling like in some kind of Likert scale within there, or understanding level, what they went into the school year, understanding proficiency-based learning to be and where they are with that now. That, that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
Would start to get it, I think, some of the, the data that I think would be useful for us all to look at.
And probably what we're going to have to do as well is we have some like hard data, numbers and things, and a, around who's in what kind of classes and who's earning honors and who's not. And then we can compare that not to last year, but to, like, pre-pandemic, and that'll be interesting. The other thing we may need to do is even if we crafted the best questions in the world, it may not get to some of the nuance, so we might have to run, uh, some focus groups or something where, where we spend an, an hour and a half talking with twelve students exclusively about proficiencies to, to really get what's going on there.
And my only other point that's more detailed is just seeing, um, the feedback on crew and noticing that we're still not getting crew right. So Christie, it was good to hear from you that that's something you're focused on. Because I think it's, it's a big chunk of time, and it's a really important chunk of time, and it's something that I think could be really powerful if we get it right. So, and we're just not getting it right yet. So, thank you.
Cool. A, any other focused reactions in this first round?
Yeah, on, on page three, we asked about feedback from your teachers about your work. So eighteen percent were not getting very much feedback at all, like monthly, quarterly, or never. And then how often do your teachers ask you to assess your habits, which is also, you're giving feedback for your own self. Twenty-five percent were saying monthly, quarterly, or never. So it sounds like there's a bit of a disconnect about, and, and again, you don't, uh, you don't know if it's the same teachers, but, or the same kids and the same teachers, but kids aren't getting that feedback, which is part of proficiency-based learning. And, and so that just struck me there. I was interested on the very first page about the demographics, because the student group that responded, which is bigger, is also way more diverse than this group of parents that responded, which probably, you know, there may be a reason there, but it was interesting. But, um, wasn't the same kids and the same parents?
Yeah, I mean, in most categories, it's, it's double in terms of everything, right? Uh, uh, almost double in free lunch, uh, almost double in IEPs.
Right, so you're getting, at least you're getting to the kids that sometimes may not be the ones who respond to things like this.
Right, yeah. What we did do.
I'm not hearing anything.
I'm not hearing anything.
What we did do is be able to break it down. So the people, let's say the 26% eligible for free lunch, how did they answer some of the questions? Because part of this was that it was going to be less... It was going to be fair to all ranges. And we really don't know that because all we know is what percentage are there. But we don't know, it could be all 25% who didn't think communication was good. Could be all females.
Right.
We have the ability to do that with this data and I appreciate you raising that because we should do that.
And part of it was, we gave you seven pages of data. We didn't want to give you 50 pages, but we can do that and sort it any which way we want, right? So free and reduced lunch, which is an index of poverty and wealth, IEPs, which is tied to special ed, counseling or not receiving any of the services. And see if there are gaps or differences. Cool. And yeah.
On page four with the worded out thing. The kids, the students' words are about good, acceptable... Somebody, it's like almost a useless came up there, being okay. Whereas the parents, what stands out, competence, competent, ability, competency, understanding, right? But the kids seem to see proficiency as just getting by.
So this actually came up in our debrief when we looked at this internally. And this is just a guess, but we worded the question, share three words to describe what you think is much like proficiency. And we didn't say proficiency-based learning. And those two things, especially from a student's perspective, I can see where it could be interpreted differently because in the rubric on their scale, one of the words we're using is proficient, right? And so what does it mean to be proficient versus what is proficiency-based learning? And I think we probably, on this question, weren't as careful as we should have been with how we worded the question.
So like the students were very literal about describing the column and the parents inferred that it was proficiency-based learning.
Another really general one, but when you look at, I think it's on page two, that in general, the students are happier with what's going on than the families. And that's very general. There's a lot more dark green in your mind with that. It's like the things that were asked of the students than the recent ones, the things that were asked of the families.
Anybody else? I have a couple too. One of the ones that really stands out to me, and this came up in a conversation the other day, is remembering how important school activities are for students, right? So if a large part of ninth graders are enjoying, feeling rewarded or valuing school activities, well, we invest in that. That, I don't want to make those then in terms like academic in nature, but there may be some opportunities to look to it. What excites people about activities that could be happening in other places? So I want to play around with that and dig into that a little more.
Could I just ask maybe a stupid question? But how would you define school activities? Is it like anything extracurricular or anything but academic? How is that? Is there a definition or how would you define it?
I'm seeing it as anything extracurricular. Right? So I mean, in some ways, it's not surprising, right? That everybody's fired up about wrestling or the advanced drama production or something. But why are they fired up about it? Maybe they make a choice, they're with a peer group that they really appreciate, they're working towards a common purpose. They're celebrated for their success. And I think there's a lot there to unpack.
I guess one question I would have is number one, Anne just pointed out, and maybe this is something I'm missing. There are nine for the students and there are six for the families. Were there more or they just weren't included on there? Or what if I answered?
That's the student one was longer than the parent one.
Except the one missing from the student was, how are you adjusting their proficiency-based assessment system? Why wouldn't we ask the students that? I realize we asked somewhere else, but it would have been interesting to see if there's a disconnect between students and families on each one of these or a connection.
Yeah, that's interesting. So why not use nine for all of them? Yeah. I mean, I think the crew, it was really more important to hear students' experience of crew than parents' secondhand experience of crew through their students. But I agree with you.
So would you say that like getting feedback on their assignments would be equal for that question for students versus the families adjusting to a proficiency-based assessment system or no?
No, I don't think they're exactly parallel, right? And I think they overlap, but I don't think they're exactly parallel.
I guess the thing that would be curious for me is that I think that question could be applicable to grades, other grades. So seeing how students in other grades that aren't dealing with what the ninth graders are having, responding to questions about their assignments and about their feedback and about some of the ones that are more general, because a lot of these are very general.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. Any other sort of things you noticed? And then we could transition to things you wonder about.
Peter, I just, that 10% of the students didn't feel study hall was going well. That stuck to me as being a former instructor and a proctor in study halls. I would just, I thought study halls were a break from the normal routine, chance to catch up on things. To see the 10% feel that it's not doing well and the 20% say it's just okay. Is there not enough to do in study hall? I don't know. I was, that's what, that just kind of struck me as being out of the ordinary for kids, but.
Well, and to me that, Bill, it's a really good one that screams for a focus group because the 10% could represent, I don't know, half of the 10% could be people that wish their, or students who wish their classmates were quiet. And they're frustrated because it's too social. And the other half could be people who wish it was structured differently and was more social, right? So the 10% in and of itself just sort of is the surface of it. And digging into it some more would be really, really good to know.
Peter, another thing is question 10, were you surprised about whether you were on track or not on track? But it's not clear, were they surprised they weren't on track? Were they surprised if they were on track and they didn't know they were? I mean, I can't tell without, you know, what they surprised you about.
In hindsight, I realized the same thing when we got the results of this. I was like, okay. Again, screams the need for a focus group. And that is actually something we've talked about, how we can facilitate some focus groups to get more detailed qualitative feedback from students, both connected to this and actually more broadly. And I'll just share this because it was this morning's group meeting I had with the program change group. One of the things that they were expressing is some student frustration around all of these surveys, right? And that like some students aren't responding because they're just sick of being surveyed. Some students who are responding might not be answering, that like might not be taking it seriously. So what can we do to get this information back to students so they understand how we're using it and then actually engage in more conversation with them so that we're really hearing all the nuance of some of the questions of it?
Yeah, and that's a really good point because it's a two-part question. And to get a reasonable response, it should only be, it could be two questions. Were you surprised if you were on track or not? I'm sorry. Were you surprised you were on track, yes or no? Were you surprised you were off track, yes or no? That would be more telling. So and we sort of are blurring the line between the two already. So sort of what you noticed and what you have additional questions about. Are there any other additional questions or things that people would like us to try to dig in more on?
That on the first one or the second one?
Are you talking about number 10 or the whole thing? I'm sort of joking, Bill. Either one, as we do a next survey or as we do focus groups or just talk to people, is there other information you want us to look into or?
Yeah, the one thing I was thinking that could be useful coming from the feedback in the survey was getting data from admissions officers on how colleges view proficiency-based learning. Because it seems like there's some uncertainty and anxiety around that piece. And I feel like that's been mentioned before, but I think that that would be interesting. And then not necessarily the purpose of this survey was, but I'm certainly very interested to hear from the teachers as well and how they're finding this to be.
Yeah, and today Kristi and I met with the ninth grade team and they know that that's on the horizon and in the near future. We'll make some space to hear directly from them. The, so the perception around how our college is going to receive this or not, there's tons of research out there. We looked at it a lot. And sort of earlier last year, we mentioned this mastery transcript consortium. So it's, I think it's a common misperception that college admissions offices are going to be uptight about this. They actually value this approach more than ungrounded, disconnected 95 grades.
I agree, but that's not what I'm hearing from the survey. So that tells me that there's more education, parent education, student education that's needed.
And your folks said the exact same thing when we rolled this out a year ago and I shared the anxiety around that topic is escalating.
Yeah, no, I hear it.
There's got to be a better way to communicate it than just saying.
Okay, it's definitely a communication gap that we need to address.
Yeah.
And not to be pessimistic, but when people are trying to roll out a new product like you are and you're just saying that colleges are feeling this way, people might be a little apprehensive. I would like to see some written or some hard fact-based evidence from colleges. Not that I doubt you like 100% agree with both of you, but just to say, so the admissions at Williams does this, the admissions at UMass does this, the admissions at Oberlin does this, the admissions at University of Alabama. You know, this is, you know, so we can say it's not just us trying to sell you this.
No, no, I think we could do two things. We could put together a good literature review that somebody who's really studied it in fine detail. And then some combination of us could reach out to various admissions offices that we have a good relationship with, maybe is there is there on admission season ones, because they're up to their next reading applications? And get them to share their thoughts about it too.
I would just like to follow up on that. I wondered about, one, it's already been mentioned, why ninth grade teachers were not included in this, especially as to their perceptions on where things stand now and knowing that this is a work in progress. I was also wondering what work is being required to explain what's the difference between honors and honors with distinction? Is honors with distinction in-depth papers and project? Or is there just more readings with sheets attached and pages and then doing a quiz on it? And from a discussion today with one of the teachers on the team, that's exactly what I heard they were talking about today. That there is a, there's not a good sense of what is honors work and what is honors with distinction work. I'm also wondering why ninth graders are already being stressed out about what grades colleges will accept, which kind of goes in with the social, emotional, learning aspect in which we're talking about stress and what stresses there are. And now we've added this. I, to me, it seems incomprehensible that a ninth grader is already worried about whether they're going to get into college with this proficiency-based approach. And I think, I think that should be de-emphasized. I think that's one of the leading things that is causing this stress and that we see it increased as each grade goes by. And we have Julian there. And I'm not sure if when he was a freshman, was he worried about whether or not his social studies freshman grade was going to be accepted in college? Or these kids are already have asked me about MCAS scores. Are colleges looking at MCAS scores? I just think that this adds so much stress that's unneeded. And I would hope that this is kind of de-emphasized at this time. I think that it is, it's, that was really what got me is that comment. Also, another comment that I have, and I'm glad that it's coming up. I was wondering about having a small number of school committee members with a focus group of the ninth grade teachers, random students and parents. I was amazed that only 44, there was only a 33% rate of parents. I think we have to be careful with only 33, what assumptions we're doing. And I think in this focus group that I'd like to see at some time, maybe near the end of the year, is do we readdress the assumptions under which this policy was enacted? And are there ways that we can examine those assumptions? And are they still valid or do they need to be reassessed and tweaked again? I think it's very good for a body that sets policy to look at the assumptions under which that policy has been enacted and to draw historical aspects and parallels. I think of the Vietnam War and the policy that was never really questioned, especially by the leaders, but the underlings had really serious doubts. So I, that's, this is just my thing. I think it would be really good for us as a committee, maybe a small group, to meet with the ninth grade teachers, the parents and the students at random. Some teachers could pick students, but I think, you know, students would be invited to give their opinions on this. So that's what I was wondering about. And also I was wondering about where are the ESL students in this? Especially these new students who have just come into the school right before Christmas. They seem to be left out. And I'm very concerned that this proficiency base and what they're used to and how is it being explained? And of course, they're having difficulty with English anyway. So how do they fit into all this? Okay, that's a lot. That's a lot, but that's what I was wondering about.
Can I take a stab at just a couple pieces of that?
Don't feel all get in from all, I think, but we're just throwing out things.
No, no, I know. There was one thing that Bill stated initially that I just want to go back to. It was actually, Bill, at the very beginning of your comments, you were talking about the difference between honors and honors distinction. At the ninth grade level, there is honors distinction. That's it. So I just want to clarify that. Peter already alluded to, he and I both met with the ninth grade team today. And Bill, you said you talked to somebody from the team about the conversation today. The team is very much in the process of reviewing and reflecting on their first semester experience and working together to discuss what adjustments might be needed to improve their work. And that's what we should be doing constantly. So I don't, I don't think the fact that they're engaging in that conversation is a negative. I think it's actually a positive.
Well, it was just what I was wondering about, that's all.
Yeah, good. And the, the English language learner thing is a whole nother complex thing to unpack. Another lifetime ago, I was actually an ESL teacher and did it for many years. And it, we just have to be careful about not speaking about that group of students monolithically. So, so there's some that come to us with, with previous formal experience in schools. And there's some that come to us with interrupted education or almost no previous formal experience in schools. So, so we, when we talk about that group, we sort of have to look at the subgroups within the, within the groups. And, and, and that's an important group to focus on. For everybody who's a new arrival, a lot of the work they're doing is just around building relationships and, and developing communicative competence so they can get their thoughts across. And, and then after six months or a year, unless they, they came with a strong background in language study, then they really get into the academic language, so.
Yeah, I would just like to add that many of our newcomers specifically are in some of the separate courses that I would explain to some of you that we are doing, the heritage language, they're getting some separate math where they're getting additional support services. We did put the survey out in Spanish. We had it translated and presented out. We didn't get responses and that is obviously something we have to work on. But many of the group you're referring to, Bill, I think are not in, like they're getting all of their English from the ESL teachers. Like they're not in an English class. So there's some places where they wouldn't be able to necessarily respond. There are other things they could respond to though. You do want to work on getting our feedback.
So I'm just, I'm seeing, thanks, Bill. I'm seeing Bonnie has a hand up.
Yeah, I'd like to, when you're asking the students which, how they feel that they know what the next step is in their learning. When you look at the grades, the students that get, get grades and points, you've got 29%, which is, you know, the largest of, you know, strongly, strongly agree. And then you look down towards the proficiency base and you've got the strongly disagree at the largest amount. But I'd like to know, maybe there's an opportunity here if we knew more of the demographics of the kids that are feeling this way, you know, whether ethnicity, financially, whether these are kids that are on IEPs or whatnot and to see where certain kids are sitting on this to be able to focus more into what we may be missing or what we could be doing better of.
Yeah, I think, Bonnie, that's well said and we'll commit to cutting the data again and then sort of sharing a high-level summary that, that in, in these populations, it's exaggerated or underemphasized or more bluntly, it's better or worse.
I guess my question is as simple as like, where do we go from this? Besides sort of additional survey data, what's the next step moving forward with this information? And I would also just stress a sense of urgency as the reality is students will go to school tomorrow facing these challenges. So, so it's, it's definitely something that is, is an urgent thing to be.
Good, no, I agree with you. The teachers, Kristi and I spent an hour and a half this morning talking about what are the important characteristics of honors work? And, and I think we have another conversation around that for next week to sort of wrap it up. And then, and then it's likely that they'll, they'll translate that into some shared and some, some different expectations. There's a lot in this that to me is really actionable, right? Like one thing that, that I highlighted is the, the need to give students more regular feedback on their work. So the people that are getting it daily or weekly are in pretty good shape. But the students who either are getting it less or they're getting it, but they don't realize they're getting it, that's a real growth area, right? And it might be that, that we're transmitting it and nobody's listening and that's something to work through, or it might be we're not transmitting at all.
I caution against it so much actual, I mean, I just expressed before, I think the utility of survey data is not what you all make it out to be generally. I think one, at this particular jump, I'm sure, I'm glad that you're tracking it as everything else as we go along, but I'm, I don't know how much we really learned from this. I'm far, far more focused on the actual outcomes based on the metrics that you folks set out when we originally did this proposal than in the end. So I would caution against any reaction, good or bad, to survey data.
Yeah, I mean, the, I hear that and largely agree with you. Survey data may be a leading indicator of harder data and, and there may be some value in that, particularly almost to Julian's point about, we don't want to make a mid-course correction at the end of the fourth quarter. We want to make the mid-course correction as close to halftime as we can.
One of the things that I would caution is, I think this screams out for more communication. And when we get a 33% response rate from parents and families, I think you have to decide whether that's, you can always assume that's because they're satisfied. But I will take the other path to assume that they really don't know what they don't know and did not participate in that. I think other than surveys, I think in-person meetings are really important to get, obviously Zoom. To get people there won't be easy, but I think there's got to be more communication.
Yeah. But then you just touched on one of my points. Lack of participation in a survey tends to be evidence of satisfaction and dissatisfaction. That's like a, a PhD in statistics would tell you that.
Yeah, but you're on a watch and you have to do further, figure that out.
Yeah, cool. All right, well, hopefully this was helpful. It, it's, it's another sort of piece of the puzzle. At our next meeting, we hope to share some, some of the other data I was, I was talking about. In the near future, we'll, we'll have the teachers join us as well. And the, the big thing I'd like to say is, well, we've an obligation to keep making it better. It is also a work in progress. And, and, and we should be simultaneously patient with ourselves and also set high expectations around the work we're doing.
I'd just like to say something, I mean, and I agree. I wonder what the result would be if we were using the old system or the non-proficiency-based level. I mean, would they be the same? Would they be worse? Would they be better? I mean, obviously there's nobody for us to provide that information. But I mean, this is, you know, a first survey and we have nothing to compare to. So I think, you know, as everyone has pointed out, there's some really bold points in there. But, you know, again, what Rich said is it's hard to draw any inference or make any, you know, some decisions just based off of this, these results. What I would like to make, before we move on, I didn't know what to do. And I'd like to see what the paid professionals like Chris B. and Joe and Peter wants to try. I mean, what are your thoughts on this, on these results, if you have, not to put you on the spot, but?
Overall, I was pleased. There was nothing in here I felt shocked by in terms of concerns that were raised. The things that were raised as concerns mostly aligned with places that I already feel like we have work to do to keep improving. So like room, for example, I know on the ground, we have work to do to continue to improve it. I have heard concerns coming to me about level of rigor around honors distinction and alignment. So I know those are conversations we have to keep doing to improve. Even the point that came up here tonight about the, the college piece, it's absolutely correct that we have not communicated that out and that causes anxiety for people who don't know and understand. And that's our responsibility to address. So there was, there was nothing shocking to me about it. And that's, I think, is a living because it means that we're recognizing what's happening and we're working really hard to address it on the ground. And the survey data is one piece of everything we're doing. A lot of it is my observations as I walk through the building, the conversations I'm having with teachers on a daily basis, the team meetings that we're doing, so.
Thank you. And just one thing that screams out to me and I think Stuart mentioned it is the, the, so, so in, in schools, we have three resources, right? And one resource is money and, and books and materials. And the other big resource are, are people. And, and the third really big resource that's often not always aligned with our values is, is time. And, and I think we do a really good job making sense of our budget and we do a very good job sort of thinking about how we use people. But, but if I'm really honest about our work, I don't know if we make the best choices about our, how we use time, right? So one of the things I'd like to have conversations about is, is how we can continue to use time differently. And that might be, and this makes everybody crazy when I bring it up because everybody wants stability and doesn't want a new schedule. Could be the schedule, but it could be time before school, after school, online, during the summer, in, in all these other places. And I'd like to have some more conversations about that. All right, thank you for that. Let me try to give you a quick update on COVID, where we're at and all of that. So thankfully, and I don't want to jinx it by saying this, but our numbers are getting better. So our student cases in the last week are, are down to 20 across the three buildings. And, and it was double, triple that the week before, right? So that's great. We're doing a lot of pool testing, so 650 plus pools last week. So that's really good. The state afforded us an opportunity to shift slightly and I'm about to send a big email out about this. I sent it out to the staff today and there was a little hiccup in the Google sheet that then rippled through and, and everybody and their brother told me like, it's not working as they were editing the sheet that I wanted them to fill out. So it's going to happen tomorrow. But we signed up for the new state system where we'll continue with the pool testing or the regular weekly testing. And then we're getting one rapid test a week for each student and staff member. And it's a separate process and a different kind of test. So I'll be sending out new electronic consent forms that people have to fill out. And if they did the other consent form, that's in another system, so they have to do this one again. But what we'll try to have people do is test either Sunday night or Monday morning before they go to school along with the Wednesday or Thursday pool testing. And I think this will be good. We're going to shift our approach from contact tracing to symptom identifying and management, which we think makes more sense. And that's a shift that, that a lot of colleges and, and other school districts are doing. So that's where we're going with COVID. Expect a big email from me tomorrow and, and, and we'll go from there. Any questions about that?
Sort of clarify, every student and every faculty in the district will get a rapid test every week.
If they consent to do it.
Awesome.
Yeah, yeah. And I, I think with staff, we're starting tomorrow. I think with students, we're starting, we, we had the staff ones, they came first. I think the students ones will, will have a week from tomorrow.
Will there be any, and so the pool testing is continued. If a pool test comes back positive, is there any obligation for that rapid test to be shared with the district and the school? Because the only thing I'm thinking about is there could possibly be selfish people out there that come back in a positive pool, but don't want to risk having to miss the five days of school. So would not possibly share that, that result. I'm just wondering if there's any accountability to a positive pool.
If somebody's part of a pool, the pools are getting smaller, so it's getting easier for us to identify who tested positive. Like, say you're in a pool with three people and it comes back positive, then depending on the timing of it, you might use the, the rapid test you have at home or the next day that you would have an opportunity to come to school, you go directly to the nurse's office and nowhere else and do a rapid test. And then there's an expectation that as people are doing the individual rapid tests that they also upload their data into the system. Because the benefit of this is all of us doing it together, all of us knowing where, where it is. And it's all explained in this like two-page email from how to put the three drops on the rapid test and how many rotations of your nose you have to do to, to timing and, and looking at it. And it's a different, it's called eye health or something. So it's not the bi next now, it's a different. Any other questions on pool testing or rapid testing? Okay, good. So the.
So we're on subcommittee?
Yeah, so.
Let me, let me take over there.
Okay.
So let's do subcommittees. Let's start with finance since we met tonight, Rich.
Yes, as Steve met, we met earlier tonight and were able to review how the first draft of the state budget may impact us. I think overall, once again, I was like Sharon was pretty on point. I don't, it won't result in any dramatic changes either way. I think they're still working out how it may, how the local contribution may affect the individual assessments. But there's really virtually no impact on the gross assessment, which is really great news. And once again, great work by Sharon on her predictions on that. There, there is some tweets with the health insurance stuff, which if Sharon's on, I'll have her explain. If not, I can try to do it. I see Sharon there. Sharon, do you want to explain like where, how the health insurance came through and then how it impacts us on the gross assessment?
Yes, the Berkshire Health Group met on Monday, this past Monday. And we did have a, it was approved for an 8% increase. If you remember, we've had the last two to three years, we haven't had an increase. The trends are going up though. In our largest group, which is the HMO, there was a 25% increase in utilization in claims between FY20 and FY21, which is showing a longer trend as well being projected. So again, it's an 8% increase. And at the same time, the health group voted for a one-month premium holiday next year. When that will happen, we're not certain. We'll be voting on that next month. So I can update you on that. Fortunately, I had put in a 3% increase before we did the initial presentation to the school committee in December. I was able by really parsing who's on the plan, who's going to be coming off, who's turning 65, there were retirees that will turn 65. I was able to cut that, what we had in there back a little bit and the impact is about a 2% growth in that particular line. So what you saw in December for our gross budget is about the same. So that wasn't, because of the way we had initially budgeted, there's not a lot of impact. Yet there is money in there so that the next year, when we do FY24, we won't see a giant increase in that line.
Everybody get that?
Are you first or?
So just, we, finally, we just, you know, kind of confirmed the scheduling moving forward. Sharon's going to have the, the budget, the administration's budget presentation on the 10th. Sharon's going to have the budget, the administration's budget, the presentation on the 10th. Do you want to, Sharon, help me take an informal poll now? Who wants the hard copy and who doesn't?
Yes, please. We have the hard copy, what we call our big book, which has all of the detailed pages for each line in the back on that. And then we have the small book, which is the big book without all those pages. And there will be an electronic copy online. So what I'd like to know is if people have a preference for a book, and then if so, the big book or the small book?
So what, Steve, you want to do a roll call? And everyone can say, "Big book, small book, or no book."
Dan.
Small book.
Jason.
Small book.
Bonnie.
Bonnie's got a big book.
I'm sorry?
Big book, she said.
Big book, or Bonnie? Bill?
Big book.
Diane?
Small book, please.
Cory?
Small book.
And Rich, you already told her, huh? Okay. About all that, Sharon?
Yes.
Perfect.
And the public hearing will be on the 17th, as previously scheduled.
Yep.
That's it for the finance committee report.
Okay. Sharon, you have anything else you want to add?
Not at this time.
Thank you. So let's go to policy subcommittee. It's a first reading. Does anyone have any questions about the five policies that are presented here?
I would say we can look at the policy about public participation.
Yes.
I agree with the sentiment, but I'm not sure that it's worded... I don't know if it's worded for what you wanted to say. It says, "Any citizens, comma, student, in addition to student, parent, staff, or resident of Great Barrington, St. Patrick's." Don't you want to say, "Any citizen of Great Barrington, St. Patrick's, West St. Patrick's, or any student, parent, or staff?"
Yes, yes. That is what the meaning, so we will change that.
Okay. No comment on any of the policies.
Anyone else? So what happens next? This will come back for a second reading and a vote, that'll be at our next meeting. Jason, building in the ground?
Yeah, we met yesterday. Very important meeting. Steve, so I went through a list of all the things happening in each of the three buildings. First off, high school. Unfortunately, the greenhouse has a huge refrigeration system there, and it finally died, that refrigerator. So to fix it, basically, we equal cost to replace it. So he's not doing anything now. I was looking into some short-term fix, maybe a cheaper refrigerator to get by until we, you know, find out what the results are as far as March goes and the high school project in general. But that's number one. Number two, just to update on the redesign of the bathrooms, the bus holding platform, northeast one, it's been going well, it's actually more minor than we thought, so we're actually doing upgrades on the northwest one. So hopefully both bus holding platform bathrooms will be done. Everything, unfortunately, except the handicap accessibility, which is cost prohibitive. Everything else should be said there. Number three, I want to point out that we have an ice skating rink now that's up and being used. And the maintenance guys are doing their best to try to keep the ice fresh and healthy as best they can. And that's exciting for the student and body as well as the community in large. As far as the heating goes, it's been going well. Always been keeping it higher because of the temps and, you know, the cold temperatures we've been having in Norway. So it's going well, though, no complaints as far as he's gotten feedback regarding too hot, too cold, et cetera. Starting to place some lightings, LED lights, the auditorium's complete, the parking lot, as each light goes out, they're putting LED lights in. Also doing some whiteboard replacements, bulletin board replacements, et cetera. The lockers that were supposed to be in last summer, but because of the economic chaos that they've gone through since the last year or two, they're finally in. They're coming in Monday, they're in Pittsfield, and it's over February break. We'll install those personally, 48 lockers, and get going on those, which is nice. Just looking forward, he's looking at updating some more classroom furniture, cafeteria tables, more user-friendly tables. Hope to do that over... I'm sorry, just going forward, we're going to do that. Finally, regarding the high school, explaining another outdoor classroom we put in for the spring. And the playground structure for the higher-level childhood, that's being replaced over April vacation. Middle school was short. We have the heat pump there to heat the building, cool it. And we've done a list multiple times, but there's 63 of them. The communication board is now less than a week, because it's, you know, 20 years old, 16, but, you know, it's before that was made. So we are starting to replace the communication board on each of the heat pumps, need to replace. So this year, this spring, three of them will be done. So we haven't two communication boards at once until they all convert over. But that's... It can be... It feels seamless and mostly didn't change at all. The weather, the heat has been out there as well, but that's been going well as far as preventing any frostbite, et cetera. As far as the elementary school, you know, Peter touched on the... Unfortunately, the one school where we had a couple of problems with the heat, pedal valves and coil coolings freezing. Hopefully, this will be the end of the extremely cold weather, and we won't worry about that anymore. Let's see, there's one smart board in the fourth-grade elementary school. It's been a big hit, or got a good response, so we'll put three more in to all four fourth graders. Classrooms will have smart boards. There will be a playground inspection, you know, official one to be there over February, April break. Make sure the playground is all smart. Lastly, you know, the parking situation, it's, you know, been around my neck here since I've been here. Unfortunately, Rich has left, but... Please acknowledge that this was brought up. But we're going to take another shot. We've got a meeting just devoted to that. Now that Casey has been a while, we can get her input. You know, the parking on the road, you know, there's continued concern about the dangers that brings, as well as the aesthetics and how, you know, now with the snow covering up, that's a little bit bad. But, you know, it's permanent dirt, mud pit when it rains. And so we're going to... Again, we had... It's a difficult situation, because there's, you know, not a lot of places we can go. That does cause, we're going to get changes otherwise. But we're going to take another crack at it, hopefully get some new eyes on it, and hopefully look at some type of solution. So that'll be in the near future sometime. The next few months, we'll be looking at that. And that's about it. Did I miss anything? Molly or Bill? Diane? Something you wanted to add?
Sounds like you weren't comprehensive. Any questions? No questions on that? So you had anything on the superintendent's evaluation? Nothing on technology? Personnel before, anything you want to add?
Yeah, but just quickly before personnel, under district consolidation, Sharon?
Yes.
There are two important meetings coming up in the near future with the regional school district planning board. So that's the eight-town committee that has three representatives from each town. And on the 7th and 9th of February, and I've sent this out repeatedly, but at 5:30, there are two meetings, which is sort of the progression of the conversations around what, if anything, we might want to do with Southern Berkshire. So if you ever were to go to a meeting, those would be two good meetings to go to.
Are those getting advertised on Berkshire Edge and at WSBS?
Yeah, there's a whole... And I'm not in charge of it, but there's a whole communications subcommittee within the regional school district planning board. And they are getting advertised. There've been several articles about it, which was a hope to get people out. Both school districts have sent it to everybody. As we get closer, we'll do a couple more email blasts and social media and Twitter and things.
I just want to make sure we're getting it to the voting members of the towns that don't necessarily have people in school right now as well.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We'll work hard on that. And I'll reach out to the towns if they can use their emergency call system to get to everybody.
They've been good ideas. Their reports are really well-written.
Yeah, they are very well-written.
Yeah. I mean, you could, if you want to go down a rabbit hole, you could spend three weeks reading everything on that website. It's incredible.
Unfortunately, the meeting on the 9th goes on size in Great Barrington, where the budget meeting is. So that's going to be a problem for some people.
Yeah.
There's nothing they can do. There's just so many days on budget meetings this time of year.
Okay. So it's, Steve, is the personnel report, that's okay? So it's early, but we have our first official announced retirement on our personnel report, which is Matt Fohl, who's been a long-time social studies teacher at the high school. We'll find time to celebrate him later, but I want to recognize him for all the good work he's done, both in 11th and 12th grade and 10th grade with fact and fiction and the work he's doing now with the ninth-grade team. So we've got lots of time to talk to him and check in with him, but he's announced his retirement.
Okay. Any old or new visitors? Public comment, I see a hand up. See a few hands up. So Jason and Lisa Baumgart?
Hi there. This is Lisa Baumgart. I have two children attending the school district right now. And I just have a couple of questions, you know, for the record regarding COVID and your budget. Through researching elementary, secondary school emergency relief funding, we understand that BHRSD has received a substantial amount of money from the federal government through the CARES Act, a total of $1,407,394 in 2021 and $2,44,529 to be received in 2022. Can you please confirm this, one of you?
Lisa, thanks for asking the question. There are multiple funding sources, so I don't know exactly where you're pulling it from. So I want to go back and do a little research. I thought the latest installment...
This was ESSER. This was ESSER funding.
Yeah, so just to clarify, there's ESSER 1, 2, and 3?
Correct.
So I don't know which ones you're adding. ESSER 3, off the top of my head, is 1.2 million. And I have to look up ESSER 1 and 2. On our website, I believe, is a detailed plan about both the amounts and how we intend to spend it. But rather than me misspeaking right now, let me look it up. And you and I can touch base tomorrow if we have time.
Okay, thank you. One other thing, upon further research through the Federal Register of the CDC, this grant money can only be kept if the school meets certain requirements, surrounding universal wearing of masks, continued testing, and pushing of the experimental mRNA injection. Can you confirm this as well?
I disagree with your characterization of the experimental mRNA. Let's... I need to have the guidelines in front of me to respond to this question, so let me take time to look them up.
Okay. I just think it's important, because there are many concerned parents and community members. Since this... If this is true, according to the Federal Register of the CDC, it does represent a huge conflict of interest. And as, you know, parents of students that attend your school, we can see how this could easily drive decisions. And, you know, to us, you know, we have to ask these obvious questions, you know? Are the motives of the school committee members truly fueled by a desire to protect the best interests of the children? Or financial incentive?
We've had these discussions before. The school committee is looking at the best interest of the children, and anything implying otherwise is false.
Okay. Well, you... Am I still on?
Yeah, your time is just about up, but go ahead.
Oh, okay. Well, you know, I think that we can all disagree on different parts of this. But we know that if there is a financial incentive, it's a huge conflict of interest.
Right. And do you have anything else?
I think that'll be all for now. I just wanted to ask those questions for the record. Thank you so much, and thank you for your work.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
I think Erica has her hand raised.
Yes. Erica, go ahead.
Hi, guys. I have some concerns about... It's actually was a perfect springboard, some of the comments that Bill made earlier. I'm thinking a lot, as I always do, about the English language learners. And particularly, I've been hearing some kind of unsettling anecdotes from people about what is happening in some of the classrooms at the high school, where... Where it... It sounds like a lot of these immigrant kids, youth, who have, you know, are some of the most recent arrivals, are not really being fully... They're in these classes, but not really having... understanding what's going on. They're not necessarily having a... Apologies, there's another... I have a distracting sound happening in my background. Um... I know that a few school committee meetings ago, you guys voted to increase the number of ELL instructors for the district or for the high school, but that there have been open positions. I understand that filling the positions has been a challenge. And I'm just wondering if we're doing everything we can, or if there's something that can happen more in the short term, in the immediacy, to make sure that these kids have a friendly face that can speak their language, that they know they can turn to with whatever questions, like understanding how to switch classes, if they wanted to switch their courses at the turn of the quarter. I've been hearing from some adults that some of the kids are just not having... Feeling like they have... They know who to turn to, or that the person they're supposed to turn to isn't welcoming to them. Reporting symptoms, understanding how to handle COVID protocol. You know, just both in a pandemic and also just like normal stuff that teenagers need to know about. I'm just wondering if there's some way that if there is a person that is friendly and approachable and speaks Spanish, that maybe they need to really be presented in a more obvious way to these kids, so they know who they're turning to? I'm just hearing some stuff that makes me feel like, do I need to go volunteer to be there after I'm done working my day? I'm really feeling for these kids, and I know it's challenging. And I just don't want them to be... Feel like they're swimming alone uphill and not able to understand what's going on while we wait for staffing levels.
Thank you, Erica.
Erica, I have Kristi speak to it a little bit. In the broader context, we're very excited that we got Lydia to join us. And she comes to us from Connecticut, but is a native Spanish speaker and did some of her college work in Puerto Rico.
But she's at the elementary school, right?
It is, yeah. The... And we move people around. We have some continued work to do. And I'll work with Kristi for some sort of short-term measures to figure out how we can better support kids and connect them with people at the high school. Kristi, do you want to?
Yeah, I mean, there's a couple of things, Erica, and I'm a little surprised. Erica's working closely with us, and is actually now at the high school once a week.
Yeah.
She is supporting us and doing many of the things you just outlined. And she's also been very helpful for us, connected to a specific COVID response, which she is.
Okay.
We also have five adults in the building who are Spanish-speaking and are connected with these students.
Okay.
Those five adults are not our ESL teachers. We do have one ESL teacher that has been out. And we have a long-term sub in the position who's also a certified ESL teacher. That person is going to be staying out with us in a long-term sub role to fill the open position through the end of the year, even when the person who's been out returns to us. Then we'll have the two folks... Uh, we did just transition to the second semester, and that transition can be challenging, um, specifically for our English language learning population. I will make sure to check in on that specifically tomorrow. Um, and I I'll look into some of the other concerns. This is actually, I haven't heard this raised before, so I appreciate you advocating for that.
Excellent. Thank you, Christie. Um, I know that America and also Maru from Railroad Street have been attending regularly, but I think it is important that there's somebody that's like in the building at all times part of the district that they see as their touchstone. Thank you for.
Essentially, could you explore um assigning on a volunteer basis peer mentors as well?
Yes.
Spanish-speaking students that might want to pair up and and be your first point of contact for a lot of these types of questions and issues?
Yeah. I almost missed.
Sorry. Okay, can you hear?
Yeah.
Okay, so Erica, thank you so much for bringing this up, and I want to let you know that over the past two weeks, I have been in numerous meetings where we are directly with America, with Maru, with uh John Bruno, with the um the support of our developing parent liaison um work group, that we are working very diligently, that that issue has been brought up, and we are definitely trying to figure out how to fill those gaps. So I just wanted to let you know that um, that we, we definitely are already thinking exactly what you're thinking and trying to figure out ways to troubleshoot that.
Okay, anyone else? Erica says thank you. Okay, by unanimous consent, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.